First on Jim this morning, we got Mr. Billy Balls.
Yes, sir. I'm not familiar with the Savers. I've been in the county 25 years. You tell me what I need to do. I'm here to educate and educate myself. And say thank you. And I live at Lake Airhead. I'm 74 years old. I'm retired Vietnam veteran, 25 years sheriff county sheriff, foster county captain. My mother graduated from the Army High School in 1935 with a skeet family. Balls, the Whitlock, and the Dunham, murdered. That knows them. And I just wanted to come up and interview myself. All my neighbors out there, nobody takes that and say, "Thank you." Considerate, thoughtful. I worked with the white pickings back in the eighties. I was commissioned down here. I retired as a captain, sheriff county sheriff, probably 25 years ago. And I don't want to be the problem. I don't want to have to be the solution. I've got neighbors, all they want to do is complain. They won't stop cutting over the ends of all things, or you know I kind of... But that's one of my... Been working with Mr. Denton. He's the only one for that. Every time, myself and Ms. Claudia White, some of our concerned neighbors, we've received actions from him. And he knows the problems we have. More or less, I've got a bunch of questions and I have suggestions maybe how it can be solved or at least minimize dealing with the public. I've been involved in Shelby County government for years and years, since 1967. And I've written million-dollar budgets and everything else. The average public don't know what it... What they'll consist of.
Yes, sir.
They don't even know how... They'll say, "Oh, you can hire someone." They don't know that you've got to pay them for next 25 years. But that's mainly them hearing, more or less, have a bunch of questions. They're like, "Tell me." And I have parts and words, excuse my speech, on that. I can control it sometimes. But we've got some problem areas. I live at Lake Airhead. And I've been working in the background all these years trying to help people and steer them in the right direction. When they complain, like when they would complain about the trash, I said, "Well, if I had to pick up the aluminum, put it on the front porch." I put it on the front porch. Then she built her... And her foot's being... We cut limbs and we take care of... Kind of real number four. Talked to Mr. Denton. We've cut trees, limbs, and everything else. Road department, solid waste department. I have so much. And I can either send it to you in writing to get answers and suggestions to you. Maybe we can save some of these problems in the county.
Okay, well, on your garbage situation, we let have inmates, and they rotate to every district. So it's five districts, and everybody gets a turn a week at a time.
I understand how it works. I was here when it first took over. And every time I dial that 1-800 number, nobody answers. And I talked to everybody. And I have all the names and dates and times. And every time they ask a question, they say, "My supervisor, my supervisor."
Yes, sir. And your limb, you talk about limbs and things. In the summertime, it's our blacktopping season and our bush hog season. And then the fall and the winter, we have a tractor, we call it a limb tractor, that we try to trim limbs back. And that also rotates between every district. But we did purchase a new one this year, so we have two now. So hopefully, we can have limb crews going in the wintertime to cut these limbs back on the roads.
I understand what you're competing with. And I'm on your side completely. I'm behind you 110%. If I can catch you, I got a phone. I've had the same landline for 24 years. Call me, and I'll go around and hit the gap. Only time I ever see anybody come up and knock on the door, when they have an election. After they get elected, we don't never hear them knocking on the door. But Mr. Denton's been doing it. Picking done it years ago. Although, Sheriff, I was commissioned through the Shelby County Sheriff's Department. I worked with every sheriff since about 1988. I've been charging our county. Marshall County, Benton County, Union County, Lee County. We had a working relationship. But this is 2018. And we have a different group of people. Political, mother-wise. And I'm not against anyone. I'm here to help my big problems.
We appreciate that.
But sometimes I'm not accepted by some people. And the ones that are not, I let them know straight up.
Well, I myself, you talk about all the service you've been in there. I thank you for your service.
You're right.
And, you know, we'll... We have 500-something miles of road. We have to try to keep up.
I see. I know all of it. But the average citizen, one of them will do it, try to educate my dumb neighbors and let them know that all they want to do is complain. They don't want to be polluted. There's a solution there every time. But you know, average, you know, I know what you're dealing with. First now, now, and that. Now, only prisoners picking up trash. A lot of people don't like it because you've got criminals. They can go through your trash, and they can get the information. I really don't care myself. No, it's free labor. And they can be done. But that's the point that some people are bringing up. That's like when I was in our county, in the law enforcement, we'd check people's garbage to see what they were eating and who was eating those. We knew more about a person by going through the garbage. That's the main thing, and I like that. I'm on your side, and I'm not here to... I just want to say thank you all because I've served in our position. I've written million-dollar budgets. I know exactly county commission, Shelby County. So I'm just want to give you an idea. I do know what we're doing. Not on your side.
All right. We appreciate this business.
We appreciate it.
Thank you for your concern. Next, do we have election commissioners?
Okay. The election commissioners came to me and mentioned that they would give the poll workers a raise. By statute, the poll workers are entitled to $75, but the board can approve up to an additional $50, which I went back as far as 2008. And I know it's been since 2008 that the board approved to pay $100. So there's an extra $25 out there that the board could actually approve to pay poll workers. That's what they're asking. My budget, I've pretty much done for this year. In looking at the numbers, I do believe, looking at the elections, we've got an election coming up in November, possibly a runoff. And then we will actually have our primaries for August next year, which will be three elections. I think the runoff for our primaries next year will actually fall in the next year budget because the election will be somewhere around the 25th, which would go to September, which the bill would be paid until October. So, I mean, it's up to y'all what you want to do. The poll workers are required to be there at 6 o'clock now. They normally do not leave until, I'm gonna say, probably around 8:00. They are required to deal with photo ID now, that they didn't used to have to do. So they have had additional duties added. And I do think we could do it this year with three elections and not raise my budget. Now, the next budget year, I think we would probably need to increase. So that's pretty much what they're asking. Because the next budget year, I think we'd be looking at more like five elections a year. And if there's ever a special election thrown in, you know, we can't really prepare for that because we never know.
Is there a minimum number of poll workers that are required?
There is. And we have looked at that too, because I know our last election, we got kind of heavy at my base on poll workers. They were kind of tripping over each other. If a voting precinct has 500 voters, the minimum is three. With an additional 1,000 work of registered voters, you can go up to as many as six, per precinct. Normally, what we try to do is three to four. Because if you have three workers, and somebody has a car wreck the morning of, somebody's husband gets sick, they get sick, then you're down to two poll workers. So most times, they do try to utilize four workers. Unless it is a primary and Republican.
Again, they need at least three, three at each table, minimum.
That's right. Looking, we tried to figure this morning for some dollar amount. Like this November, you're looking at about $12,000 for poll workers. So that would be, you know... So far this year, I had Kay run me something. The '14, '15 year, we had five elections. And it was $68,000. There was a special election that year for Trent Kay. I think there was a runoff. So I think it was two additional elections that year. The '15, '16 year, we've spent $23,000. '16, '17 year, we've spent $18,000. So far this year was $14,000. And I even went back, the '13, '14 year was $44,000. And normally, my budget is around $42,000 for election workers. So just to throw y'all some numbers out. And that's a lot of information. Y'all probably want to think about it and process it.
I know this, other counties don't. But what surrounding counties? Do you have any idea what?
It varies. I've texted some of my clerks today. Lee County does the max $125. Marshall does $125. Huntetop does $125. Tippa is still $100. Benton, I didn't get an answer back. Did I miss anyone? I did. Marshall was the max. But anyway, like I say, it's been, it's been 10 years at least. And I think the election commissioners are just trying to help the poll workers out. I hope there aren't any poll workers totally complaining. I know they wouldn't object to an additional $25,000. Anyway, we just want to throw it out there, let y'all think about it. And I provide you with the numbers to y'all to think about it. Maybe teach us something more, whatever.
Any comments or thoughts?
There's still a little figuring on it.
Yeah. Look at it and get back with us. We'll take that under advisement.
I'm making motion, that's fair.
Second. Motion by Randy. Second by Dave. All in favor? Motion carried. Hearing for objections for real personal assessments on land, Roger.
The only objection that I was made aware of was the specialty realtors, which is Peoples. And they, they were wanting their value to be reduced. I asked the deputy assessors about it. They said it did go down from last year to this year. But I did not know how much they wanted it to come down. This came to chance, we're not to our office. But like I said, it had already gone down when they went to assess earlier in the year. That was, it was their four-year term to be physically seen. And so when they recounted, their taxes went down from '16, '17.
They got a reduction, but they want more.
More.
Now, who is this?
It's where Peoples for goodies.
Oh, okay.
But it's under the name specialty realtors, people private.
So what kind of action you need to take on that?
What I looked at, you know, was based on, it had already gone down some. Like I said, I didn't know what they wanted it to go down to. That was not clear to me. But it had already been reduced.
So there's no specific amount that they requested?
In this letter, there is. But it doesn't, I don't know... I don't know what they're wanting taken off of their...
They're just listing what they want. They're just listing the amount they want. They're giving them the amount they want reduced, but they didn't specify what they want reduced.
We can do that, yeah.
But we physically went to their business earlier in the year. And it did come down from the previous years. Let's say they had closing rights. Then they had 52 one year, and now it's down to 45. So those came off there in the report list. Lodging may have changed from the turnover from Peoples to Goodies. Cash registers, women have as many mouths they had when they were...
Who are the local owners of specialty realtors?
I don't have that with me right now. But I think they're just businesses. And that company would take care of the goodies. And People Owe, New Albany, wherever they have those businesses. This is just the New Albany.
Satisfied.
That's not correct.
Since you've been given this, it may not change your opinion, but it may.
We've got three years to say so.
Whatever y'all want to do.
And I, you know, last year, I was... So I'm not, I'm not...
What do you think, Sophie?
Like I said, I haven't seen that. I don't know what they were requesting other than the amount, the dollar amount. But I don't know how they're justifying why it should come down.
We don't even have to reassess it here, so.
It's been given. Our attorney suggested... We don't know what they're asking for.
Well, we could say what they're asking for.
So y'all?
In this $6,000.
In this $6,000.
Yeah, I'm not saying dollars.
So y'all making a motion?
I'm comfortable with the tax assessors.
Ten years. So you're making a motion to leave it as it's been?
I will, yeah.
I'll make a claim.
Motion by Dave. Second by Randy. All in favor? Motion carried. Number four, number seven are the same thing. So approve homestead disallows.
These are just some more that we've had before. And these particular ones that we have, these are where property was given exemption on other property, as well as Union County. And so there's nothing that Union County can do except accept what the Department of Revenue recommends as disallowing the homestead. But we've looked at all of it. We've gone through all of them. We just need you to approve the disallows by the Department of Revenue.
Making a motion. Motion by Chad. Second by Evan. All in favor? Motion carried. Approve final resolution for industrial adblocker and tax exemptions.
These are on 13 industries that we have that have requested and applied for adblocker and tax exemptions. And they were given the tax exemptions by the Department of Revenue. Now, we have to accept and approve what the Department of Revenue says. Just pay a formality. So you're approving the final.
Second. Motion by Randy. Second by Chad. All in favor?
And I have lots of things, but you decide soon.
Okay. Approve a manual check for Suzanne Jenkins for $310.62 for reimbursement for lodging for youth court conference, April 1st through 3rd in Biloxi, Mississippi. Also approve a manual check to NCAADD for $150 for registration.
These are two checks that were omitted from last month. So we're now having, she went ahead and went to the conference, and we are reimbursing her for it. So that's the manual check for that.
So move.
Motion by Dave. Second by Evan. All in favor? Motion carried. Prove the claims docket for July 18.
Make a motion.
Motion by Dave. Second by Randy. All in favor? Motion carried. Approve correction on the claim docket. Been the numbers in it, vertically entered. Approve boarding checks written incorrectly. Approve manual checks to correct the incorrect written checks.
Terry knows about that.
Yeah, it's fine, number 3453. And she'd like one check to Leachon. And that makes the, uh... One $27.80 on, and one $77.58 to Leachon. She put long business.
Don't change the amounts. It's just two, it's paying two, correct?
Total will be the same.
Yeah.
Making a motion. Motion by Chad.
Second.
Second by Randy. All in favor? Motion carried. Approve board minutes for month of July.
Make a motion.
Motion by Dave.
Second.
Second by Randy. All in favor? Motion carried. Approve the road schedule. I have it right here. Looked at it. I think all of y'all have looked at it too, also. So you got it, Tommy?
Doing that, actually.
Motion by Randy.
Second.
Second by Chad. All in favor? Motion carried. Approve line J B P and Freestory Berry Road. It's 5th District Road in Boyler. I'm making a motion. Evan made a motion?
Second.
Second by Dave. All in favor? Motion carried. Approve the solid waste register.
$157,000.
$157,000. Need a motion to approve.
Make a move.
Dave made a motion?
Second.
Second by Chad. All in favor? Motion carried. Approve Baylet Pay.
I'm making a motion.
Motion by Chad.
Second.
Second by Randy. All in favor? Motion carried. Approve multiple examiner fees. We have 16 of them. Y'all always got them. Y'all got them.
I didn't get how you made all these. There you go.
Just come along.
I forgot to take that off. They called Lake Fire.
It's been a while, yeah. I didn't go yet. You're looking at life.
Need a motion to approve?
I'm making a motion. Second.
Motion by Chad. Second by Evan. All in favor? Motion carried. Need to prove acceptance of a donation of a camper from DEQ. You want to...
She got paperwork from the DEQ contacting us about a month ago. Donate a camper for Command Shriver, for the emergency management. We went and picked it up, uh, Monday last week. Tuesday. We were gonna get it put on the county.
Put it on the county in the door. Sign that. Second. Motion by Dave. Second by Evan. All in favor? Motion carried. Approve registration for $495 per person in lodging for Tiffany Erby, Brandon Grisham, Kenneth McHown, Kenneth McHown, Blake Smith, Kurt Clayton, to attend the 911 dispatch in Cinnabar in October, Keweenaw, Mississippi.
Second.
Motion by Evan. Second by Chad. All in favor?
Now, part of that will be reimbursed with a, uh... Mistake is reimbursed.
You good?
Yeah. Anytime we get reimbursed, we like it right now. Approve food and travel and a manual check for registration of $600 for Tiffany Erby, Brandon Grisham, Kenneth McHown to attend the human trafficking for dispatchers August 6th in Oxford. Need a motion.
Make a motion.
Motion by Dave. Second by Evan. All in favor? Motion carried.
Sign that, please, sir. That's a good thing. Y'all need to put in Trump, baby. I want a couple.
Approve request for checks for cash, number three and number four, for the ARC and SNLP grants to Martin Downe's project.
Sign that. Second.
Motion by Dave. Second by Randy. All in favor? Motion carried. She said one moment.
Do you want to sign all this now or do you want to sign it later? Because I'll be signing lots of stuff later, too.
Lots of stuff, she said. I just signed it all later. They work.
You asked me anything at that point?
Yeah. Okay. Approve the contract with J E Vance for, uh... Year 17, 18 audit.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Randy. Second by Evan. Motion. All in favor? Motion carried. Getting heads, everybody, with it. Discuss taking in Sarah Grace and Samuel Lane in North Oaks subdivision phase three as county roads. Now, that's seasonary district, is that right?
Yeah. So a petition has been filed by 200 more landowners, including people who are actually on the road, requesting that the county take over two roads in North Oaks subdivision, one being Sarah Grace, another being Samuel Lane. They paralleled the Union County Road 368. So with petition being filed, at this point in time, the board can appoint two supervisors outside of that Dave's district to go and view the road, inspect it, and report back to you if it's acceptable and if you want to take it in. inspect it, and report back to you if it's acceptable or if you wanna take it in. So the motion would be.
Petitions, petitions are signed.
If petition's signed, the motion would be.
You gotta get two supervisors that like you to go out and look at your road.
Do you like me?
Ah, you like.
I say, I say Randy and Chad, go check out the road. Y'all like Dave?
Dave, no.
I just made.
Randy and Chad. Sarah Grace and Samuel Lane.
So, so I made a motion for Randy and Chad to go.
I'll second that, can I second that?
Second by Dave, all in favor? Motion carried. I'm not supposed to make a motion, but.
You can make a motion all day long.
Just, so.
I'm saying Nat's got the word.
Okay, also discuss taking in Brittany Lane as a county road.
We got time, time, man, on the corner looking at Dave's road. I don't go today, then I haven't done today. Okay, but that'll be up to you, Randy.
Yeah, the next one is, uh, Brittany Lane, uh. There's been a request by the landowners and getting interested persons to, uh, to take in Brittany Lane, which is in Evans district. And, uh, we need to appoint two, two supervisors to go look at Brittany Lane.
Okay, so. Petition signed, no matter.
Petition signed, no matter.
Same thing here, why wouldn't we need a motion for two to go look at?
While we're riding, we can just.
Yeah. Chad and Randy.
All right, Evan made a motion for Chad, Randy.
Yeah.
Need a second?
Second.
Second, by Randy, all in favor? Motion carried.
We don't need to do twenty-three.
We don't need to do.
No, we do it next time, we don't have.
We want the petition.
All right, we don't. Yeah, here's the description of the last, we don't have the.
Paying the petition.
So we're just gonna, no action, no.
Bye.
I need no practice. Well, just be landowners, huh?
You got the phone place, you got, uh, the city in New Albany, you got UCA, and you got John Young at the end.
Well, you, you've got several. That connects out there.
Connects out there, yeah. They're not in county, but they're on that road.